The hour of six o'clock is upon us. We are going to begin our regularly scheduled city council meeting, so it is December 16th, 2024. I'd like to welcome you out this evening. So we'll begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Richard Bork of the Indian Creek Chapel. We appreciate you being here this evening, so if you'll please come forward and if you would please stand for that prayer, and then if you would please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to serve in a small way. Let's bow for prayer. Father in heaven, as we begin this final council meeting of the year and just before Christmas, we borrow these compelling words penned by Phillips Brooks in 1868. "O holy child of Bethlehem, descend to us, we pray; cast out our sin and enter in; be born in us today." We hear the Christmas angels, the great glad tidings tell; oh, come to us, abide with us, our Lord Emmanuel. We ask now for your guidance and wisdom upon our council and mayor as they make decisions that impact us here in our community. Thank you, Lord, for your work in and through each of them in 2024. Bless and keep our first responders as they protect and serve us tonight and through this busy season. And please, Father, send special help just now to everyone that was affected by the school shooting in Madison, Wisconsin today. And now may we be filled with the spirit of generosity, compassion, and peace, and may we reflect the true meaning of this wonderful season and into the new year. Bless our families, our neighbors, and those that are in need. Guide us now to act with love and in unity in all that we do. In the name of that holy child, Jesus, our Savior, amen. God bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Bork, for being here this evening. We appreciate you taking your time out of your evening to be with us and begin our meeting that way. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Doty?
Here.
Stoddy?
Here.
Register?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Allgood?
Here.
Dittenberg?
Here.
Thank you so much. All city council members are present and accounted for. Are there any conflict of interest declarations from any council members regarding any items on the agenda this evening? Okay, so we do have one special presentation this evening, an annual update report from our Caldwell Veterans Memorial Hall. We appreciate Terry and the rest of you being here this evening with us. So if you please come forward, and you'll have your 10 minutes to make your presentation. And thank you so much for all that you do down at the Veterans Hall and for all of our veterans in our community. It really, we couldn't say thank you enough for what you do and what you provide those services for.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and City Council. I do appreciate the opportunity to do this. I'd like to do it a little more often so I can kind of really brag on what we do there at the Veterans Hall and the contributions for our community. And it always seems like the presentation that we give here is a little underwhelming because we do so much there that's kind of hard to put into words or into slides, limited to five or 10 minutes to be able to present to you. So I want you to know that everything here is just a real quick snapshot. There are so many things that we do if we're asked for a veteran or family member. The community, we're involved in so many ways. So very proud of what we accomplished there. So first, I'd like to introduce our board, a lot of new council members and individuals here. Our city liaison, Chuck Stoddy, is councilman up front there, and I appreciate his advice and help at the Veterans Hall. Second, Lieutenant Damon Rice is our liaison with Caldwell Police Department. He's full-time on our board now as well. We got Kelly McCartney sitting in front here, and she is a full-time veteran service officer that's paid by the Idaho Division of Veteran Services, works there Monday through Friday. And awesome, we got a second one there now, Abel, that works 40-hour, minimum 40-hour weeks. And we have Stephen Zimmerman, which is the vice chairman, and next to him is Scott Ray, the other vice chairman. The others, we have a party where they're at, kind of getting ready to be there. So we were the lucky ones that drew the short straws. A lot of you are familiar with the Veterans Hall at the old Carnegie Library, and I'd like to thank Mike Dittenberg and his crew because they were there kind of from the beginning in 2014, along with the city, to help us tear apart a lot of that building and then start building it back structurally and to make it the beautiful building it is now. So thank you, Mike and your team, for spending how many months there, helping us, years, a couple of years, actually. So the hall is open a minimum of 20 or 2,080 hours annually, and that's eight to five, Monday through Friday, minimum. And there's a lot of evenings and weekends if we're there to support other activities. We're averaging well over 1,000 veterans a month there. Just last Thursday, we had 83 in one day. It gets pretty busy down there. It used to be that when I started off in 2018, when we opened the doors, I could be there about 30 hours a week, taking care of the management of the building and working issues, helping along with the service officers and the people there. And we now have three of us that are spending 30, 40 hours a week there and sometimes more, addressing issues, especially this time of year, of the veterans in the community. So very thankful there. Volunteer hours coming away from the hall, that's our veteran organizations, and the rest of us, well over 18,000 hours last year into events in the community, as well as the other activities helping our veterans. So we're appointed, and maybe a lot of people don't understand that, as a board for the city. And I'd like everybody to kind of understand what that means. So we've been given the authority, at least we did initially, to be able to reach out to the department heads within the city, to the mayor, with the city councilman, and work one-on-one to resolve issues for veterans within our community in the greater area. A lot of that is to resolve issues at our level, veteran to veteran, before it ever gets elevated to a higher level. A lot of those are little, simple things. Some are things that we resolve before it ever gets to the police department or law enforcement or to other levels. So I'd like to really emphasize that with all of you, that we try to encourage, because we had, have had quite a change in leadership in the different departments in the city. And if you could reinforce that with them, if they have known an issue with a veteran, whatever it is, if they have, you know, an old car there, a vehicle that's parked or sitting over the easement line, limbs hanging in parking areas, wheelchair issues, something needs painted to match the historic district area, whatever it is, please have them contact us. If they know somebody that looks homeless or in need or at risk, somebody that maybe needs food or a hand up, please get that word to us, and we'll work tirelessly to resolve that before it goes anywhere else. We look at that as our number one priority to help with the city, and we appreciate all of the relationships we have there. Programs throughout the area are built around strengthening the community and the resources there that can help our veterans lead a high-quality life with dignity and respect. And it's amazing the impact, and I'll get into those numbers in a little bit, but having our two veteran service officers there are probably one of the biggest impacts in this area. And I'll talk about the money that that brings into our city and our county is tremendous. The jump from the statistics that we showed from back in 2013, 2016, to what it is now in 2023 is amazing. I mean, it's over $224 million that a veteran will come to Kelly or to Abel and work their disability claims and get, you know, a good example. A Korean War veteran, him and his wife in their 70s, late 70s, living on Social Security, about $1,800 a month. His wife is in a wheelchair, really struggling, and they worked on his packet, got it amazingly in about six months, got it approved, 100% disability. He now has, between his Social Security and his disability, about $4,800 a month. And that's spent here in this community, building them a better quality of life that they deserve. But just think about the economic turnover of those funds that help pay taxes, repair roads. But number one, pay for a quality of life that they well deserve and keeps them away from needing assistance through other programs. Very proud of that. Very proud of them. Again, we talked about being a primary liaison, and we work throughout the county as well. We work with the Third Judicial District, with Veterans Court, with Judge Beaver, on other Veterans Treatment Court and other nonviolent crimes and things where we can work with projects, community service efforts, and those where we get them turned around, give them a hand up, get them focused with a job, those kind of things. But some other things we're very proud of in helping the city, Memorial Day, we put out about 1,500 flags, actually, on Canyon Hill. That's more than's ever been put up there, and we're working with the cities, folks up there to identify veterans' graves and get that program that they have, that identify programs where it's a little easier, where somebody can look on there and actually by plot, instead of having to bounce all over the cemetery, to where in each area up there, it identifies veterans' graves, so that we can do that. We also picked up Greenleaf this year, and they've asked that we help out on Highway 55 at the cemetery out there. So we're preparing for that as well. Independence Day Parade is a huge one, and it, I'm so proud of that. It is the second or third-largest parade or celebration in the state by far. 35,000 to 50,000 people, other than residents, it brings to that parade is what it's been estimated at. That's a huge influx of people that are here for the day, taking care of all the fireworks and things, but also visiting the businesses in the community, paying money there, gas stations, restaurants, all of those kind of things that help bring in money to our community. We also put up the Walkway Heroes that recognizes those that have given their life since the global war on terrorism, and we proudly put that up every year. Veterans Day is another huge one. It started back in 2006, a partnership between the city and us and the Elks Lodge that we keep strong, that this year drew well over 300 people. Got a little cold and windy, but there was people that stood there for, it lasted a little long, about an hour and a half, but recognized not only our veterans, but also this year, special opportunity to bring the monuments there from all over the community, bring them there, get them refurbished and looking beautiful, and dedicating those for the city of Caldwell and all of the citizens around her, so they're in one spot, they're lit 24/7, so they can come there. And we did a great job with the Littleton Monument that was destroyed, essentially, you couldn't read it. So it's there, and his great nephew came from Indiana out, especially to see that. He had heard about it in the news, and we didn't know that there was any living close by, and so he's going to be involved in that. So another one is our Christmas Eve dinner that we put on, started off for veterans, but we've now opened that up to anybody in the community, anywhere, that wants a good holiday meal. That's on the 24th of December from 11:30 to 5:00, and anybody is welcome to come down there. You know of somebody that's by themselves that wants to come and visit, or somebody that's homebound, get us a name, number of meals, and address, and we'll deliver that food to them. So 11:30 to 5:00 on the 24th of December, we're going to have food for 200 people. So I want to use every bit of it. And Walmart donated every bit of the food this year. So amazing. Thank them if you're ever out there. Again, a 13-member board. Introduced a few of them here, and that's an annual presentation. Mayor, we'll have that right after our January meeting. We have all the officers appointed. Then we'll give that to you, and the city council will be able to review and approve or ask questions of. Our calendar, again, includes not just veteran groups, but we have every Thursday AA meetings, substance abuse meetings. We have scout troops, Girl Scout troops, Cub Scout Pack, which is kind of unique because it's about 50 kids that are all disabled. So it's huge family, parent involvement. So anything from Down Syndrome to disabilities of any kind, and we support them there. So something we just started last year is we've joined, joining forces of Idaho and the Idaho Veterans Network. That is a link through social media and emails where we're linked throughout the state of Idaho now and kind of the greater, greater area of surrounding us in Washington and Oregon, to where we, if we don't have a resource or an ability to meet the needs of a veteran or veteran family, we can reach out to that network, put it out, and there will be somebody, I guarantee you, in that network that can help. We had a Air Force veteran lady that didn't have the money to bury her mother, and we put the word out on the network, and within two weeks, we had enough money collected where we could help her have a satisfactory ceremony for her mother. So anything that, like I said earlier, that we can do to help, please reach out to us, because we have this huge network now that we are much bigger than ourselves and be able to meet. Programs and services. Talk a little bit about the Compact Act. It's a new one that the VA has finally opened up about a year ago, and we've been promoting and working with our local providers so that they know where of it. The VA and all of their wisdom has got a great program here. The only problem with it is that once a veteran is, goes to an emergency room or a hospital for mental health care, he has 72 hours to notify the VA that he's in the hospital getting care. Well, probably the last thing, if somebody's having a mental health crisis, is going to think about in three days that I got to call the VA and let them know that I'm there, so that they'll pay for the service. So we're reaching out to West Valley Medical, Terry Riley, all of the providers around this area, and training them. They have a phone number and a name of who they can call and contact. So one of their questions when a person is being admitted is, are you a veteran? And if they are, they know who to call, and they'll go through and set that up for that veteran so that they're taken care of and don't have an $80,000 or $90,000 bill the minute they come out of the hospital. Again, we have two full-time certified service officers now. We just picked up Abel this year, and actually wanted us to make office space for a third one, and we just don't have another office available. But the need out there is that we could, could very well take on a third person. See these people, how busy they are each day, even making house calls. They'll go, if a veteran can't drive, they will drive to their home and meet with them. And they also work with the Veterans Court as a liaison for us with the Third Judicial District. So I talked about the impact target demographics. So Canyon County is the second-largest veteran population, about 15,200 veterans. And when you multiply that out, that's over 45,000 people that we have an opportunity to impact and make a difference with. Of those, 3,300 have disabilities, and 307 of those are female veterans, which really add a new dynamic and different requirements to help. So we're reaching out with that. So the $224 million number is from the Federal Bureau of Statistics, National Center for Veterans Analysis and Statistics. So that's money that is spent in Canyon County for veterans for disabilities, pensions, education, home loans, et cetera, A to Z. So that's money that's spent here that wouldn't be here if we didn't have people like Kelly and Abel in that Veterans Hall reaching out and making a difference. And it makes a huge difference in Canyon County and Caldwell, I think economically, huge. New things that we're doing is reaching out more, building, now we've got some younger veterans helping us in the social media aspect of it, Facebook, websites, and all the other programs, and advertising what we're doing, why we're doing it, and getting our volunteers that help on our programs through that. They're actually signing up and helping, and then they're sharing it out to their friends. So we have lots of volunteers that are coming in and helping with most everything that we're doing, like our Christmas Eve dinner. We've now got like 60 volunteers that are going to come down and help one hour, two hours, three hours, and have ladies that have signed up to cook the turkeys and hams and come that morning and actually prepare the food, help serve, and clean up and do that. We have a local motel that we've coordinated with where we can call now, we have a given rate. So if we have a veteran, families that, earlier we had one that husband and wife and a seven-year-old girl were living underneath the Boise River Bridge down in the Willows in a tent. And we were able to get them into a motel for a couple of weeks until we could find some day work and things like that to be able to help with the veteran. So those are, that's actually more common than we'd like to think. Nampa Bike Project, we had a veteran that couldn't drive, and they donated a bike, a helmet, and all the stuff so that we could get it to him so that he could get a job and be a part of our community. Building Stroudrum Veterans is a new program every Friday now that counselors there that will, and they don't have to be a veteran, they come there and they'll meet in a group session, and they'll just talk. And it won't be designed for anything other than getting them there and getting them to start sharing issues to where then we can reach out and help them to the next, the next step in getting, getting We have a shower down there that used to get used a lot. It's kind of changed a little bit, and I don't know why, but we used to have a large group of veterans kind of going through there, getting showers, and then we would give them clothing, personal hygiene items, some food items. And that's kind of slowed down. I don't know if that's because of winter coming on and most of them are moving to better weather. And then we're a cooling station for the city during the hot. Humanitarian aid is huge. This year, we've already given away two vehicles. We had a veteran that donated the vehicles, and we haven't worked on. We had one family that their vehicle broke down, needed $1,800 to get the vehicle fixed, and we were able to take one of those vehicles and get it in their hands, so that saved, saved them considerable, and it's a vehicle that them and their family can use. All of these things that we're doing lessen the impact to the community and the county. So an example of a veteran that passed away in an assisted-living facility, they knew he's a veteran, they had stuff there, but there was no DD-14. So we jumped in and started working with the Veteran Cemetery in Boise and back in Arlington. And it took us eight months, but we found the documentation to prove that he was a veteran. So we were able to get him interned or at the Veteran Cemetery. Talking with the coroner's office at Canyon County, that saved at least $8,500 out of their budget and the process, and we got him interned respectfully in a place that he deserved to be, rather than on a shelf in an urn with nobody taking care of it. So there's been actually a couple of cases like that that we've been able to jump in and help. So we appreciate being a partner with the, with the city of Caldwell and everything that we're accomplishing and in the greater community, which I think Caldwell is, is huge in this whole community and the things you do. You're one step up on everybody else in caring for your citizens, and I appreciate that. So in closing, I'll take questions, but I'd ask that you approve the appropriations that you did last year, again, for the FY26 budget of $30,000 to go in and help us continue to pay for operating expenses and the cost of running the Veterans Hall. With that, any questions, anybody?
Thank you so much, Terry. Appreciate you being here and for your presentation and all that you do. In that regard, Councilor Stoddy, do you have a comment?
Ms. Mayor, I just wanted to add a few things. I think I've been involved since 2015, and the board that we just spawned in here this last month and the new chairman we're going to have next month. I think it's probably one of the best boards as far as participations we've had. We even managed to talk, I don't know who it was, talk legislator signs in the coming and attending our boards. And we're happy to have Lieutenant Rice along because he's our conduit between the board and the police department if we have some problems with vets. Instead of sending them off strictly to jail, we can converse with Lieutenant Rice, and he talks to our police department, and we can send those folks other than jail, and that saves the county a lot of money, too. As far as donations are concerned, I want to remind everybody, too, and especially Mrs. North's attention here, our finance director, that most of our budget is either from grants or donations or fundraisers. It's not from any other facilities. So with the kind of budget that we have now and the services that we render, it's pretty important, you know, that we have, that we have some donations. And with the amount of money, no better reason than a selfish one, Mrs. North, the amount of money that the veterans bring back into this county and the city, I think $30,000 is pitiless compared to, you know, what the board actually gives out to the communities. So anyway, good job, Terry and the board. Appreciate you having with us. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Councilor Dittenberg, you have a comment?
Mr. Harrell, Colonel Harrell, I think I was there the night that the original city council gave you that building for a dollar a year for 99 years.
For 100 years.
For 100 years, yeah. But make no mistake about it, it was your vision and your drive that made me question whether or not my employees actually work for me anymore. So thank you for your drive and your dedication, and hopefully you're spreading whatever, whatever made it successful for you onto the next people who are going to manage that hall. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good. Do you mind grabbing the audience participation sheet for Debbie?
Hi.
Oh, you already have it? Okay, never mind. She saved you the trip. So, okay, well, thank you again so much, Terry. Appreciate that. Appreciate you and everybody that's down there, the entire board. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Okay, that moves us into our audience participations. We do have a few people signed up for this. So please do remember that you need to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and also that those comments should be respectful. And any issues that you cannot address within that three minutes, that's, you can meet with staff after this meeting or tomorrow to get into further details if you need to after that. So our first up is Jean. And if you could just state your name for the record, and then we'll have you timed up for the three minutes.
Jean Craigbring. First and foremost, I understand that perusing the agenda packet in preparation for the council meeting is daunting and time-consuming. I've scrolled, read, and scrolled, too. Luckily, this one was only 331 pages. I appreciate the due diligence to learn, understand, and digest the agenda packet. For that, I thank you. As I stand before you, though, I am truly embarrassed for Caldwell. It has been said in council meetings by council members that there aren't enough participants attending in opposition. Actually, public sentiment is, why bother? Public comments aren't considered. Caldwell is going to do what Caldwell wants to do. My opinion doesn't matter. Well, congratulations on cementing that sentiment with an exclamation point. Well done. Canyon County Commissioners requested a meeting as a stakeholder for the dirt lot. Canyon County Commissioners requested a meeting as a stakeholder for the dirt lot. As a city, you should be working in conjunction with Canyon County. Instead, five out of seven thumbed their nose at the request, letting the county know that you don't care about their opinion. To add to the poor communication, a letter was sent stating that the project was approved. No, the letter of intent was approved. Your legal counsel clearly stated that approving the letter of intent was non-binding. The project details have not been approved. This in itself is embarrassing, showing Caldwell's unwillingness to cooperate with stakeholders. The Canyon County Fair was established in eighteen eighty-seven, and the City of Caldwell was established in eighteen ninety. Up until this whole dirt lot debacle, the county and city have worked together. As the Commissioners stated, quote, "Partnerships are essential, and the Canyon County Fair is part of our heritage," unquote. Furthermore, according to the Commissioners, no other events, no other event brings in as many visitors to the area than the Canyon County Fair. Their revenue for the fair alone this past year was seven hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. I want to address the errors presented concerning the hotel. It was stated that KSA has been a developer for twenty-five years. Granted, they applied for an LLC on December nineteenth, two thousand and one, but that doesn't equate to being a developer for twenty-five years. Interesting, though, is that there are seventeen businesses or LLCs tied to Brandon or Kate Atkinson. Many of the investments are tied to the dentist, Brandon Atkinson, and his dental practices. Mr. King claimed that they are billed and hold investors. There are currently two property records for KSA investments in Skagit County, Washington. The most recent property transaction occurred on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the oldest on November twenty-second, two thousand and six. In one record-
Thank you, Jean. Your three minutes are up on that. So just, we're not gonna get into a lot of it tonight in that regards, but just to correct a few things. It was actually Counselor Williams that asked for that meeting, not Canyon County, and the reason that four of the six council members and myself did not attend was due to the agenda that the county created. I emailed them multiple times, called them, asking them to amend the agenda, take certain things off of that, which they did not. So that was the reason why the council, for the council, myself did not attend that meeting. We'll continue to have discussions in the future in that regards, but again, this is not the time or the place for that, so we do appreciate your comments. Thank you. Sue Kushlan.
Good evening. Sue Kushlan, one-two-one, South Louisiana. I'm gonna, kinda continue on the same vein that Jean has. She has done her research, she's thorough. So, I'll start with Mr. Jenkins touted that we are attracting Marriott Hotels. There are thirty brands of Marriott Hotels from high-end luxury to low-end. Just stating Marriott doesn't mean that we're gonna get a high-end hotel. The dirt lot, when chocked for parking stalls, has two hundred and ninety-five parking spots that are fully utilized during the fair and other events. Not just once a year, actually several times a week. In the various meetings, Canyon County repeatedly expressed parking and safety concerns. The measly hundred and twenty stalls presented by the developer doesn't mitigate the parking concerns. For the city to use the hundred and fifty stall surveyed count from one football game doesn't truly assess the lot usage. With the current dirt lot use, there still isn't adequate parking for the public at all of the events. And you want, and you wanna take it away? In addition, Mr. Jenkins proposed using county property to demolish or relocate to create parking. It isn't the city's prerogative to make decisions concerning county property. None of the proposals on county property addressed by Mr. Jenkins was approved by nor brought to the fair. You were given misinformation. Mr. Jenkins simply presented the letter of intent. What he failed to present is the bowling alley offered to lease the land for six thousand a year, more than the KSA investments. There's at least one counselor whose mantra is to lower taxes. Please know if you go down this path with a hotel in this location, you will affect the twenty-twenty-five budget for the county. This in turn could raise taxes for city and county residents. According to Canyon County COO Greg Rast, if, quote, "If we brought all five partners together and we use the land for intended purposes of what the Griffiths family honored the city and county with, we can make it all work, but we can't have one entity invoking their will with downstream effects on our four other entities," unquote. Step up to the plate, Caldwell, and consider the effects of your decisions on safety, taxes, communication, working together, and community, community impressions. What message are you sending to your constituents, and why is this being pushed through at warp speed? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Diana Sinner? No, Natalie Levi?
First of all, I wanna say congratulations to the City of Caldwell for denying a four-point-one million dollar levy, and then watching the city try and spank them, because the schools now, instead of having police to fend the kids at the school, they're getting a security firm instead. Here's the numbers, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars is what it was gonna cost to use the police, and instead, the security firm was gonna use two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So for fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, they got spanked because the levy didn't pass. Sixteen thousand dollars became a large amount, yet when we talk about the event center, when we talk about, let's tear down the walls on the barns, and let's move this barn over here, and let's go ahead and take down the rabbit barn, which costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep those animals safe and the kids safe, money is of no problem, but fifteen thousand for the kids, big problem. Without 4H, there's no food, because guess what? Farming, you mess up, you have to figure it out next year. It takes an entire year to figure it out, and then if you don't figure it out that year, try it again the next year. The learning curve is steep. You hit 4H, you're attacking not just the children, you're attacking our food supply. The people are not okay with that. We're not okay with that. And then to find out, developers are funding your, your campaigns, and then to find out, the developers are also the ones that, all their employees, they get them car washes. Car washes are popping up like Starbucks used to in every corner. Oh, but farmers, I'm sorry, we can only give you ten inches of water, so you're gonna have to be out there with your hose, dragging the water down. You can't get it down your crop, your crop stinks. Talking from personal experience, too bad. We don't have enough water. Oh, but we're gonna-
Why are you yelling? Why are you yelling?
Oh, this is just passion.
Stop yelling.
Oh. I got your attention at least.
I can hear you.
Okay, normally you turn your head.
Yeah, but most of the stuff you're saying is not true, but go ahead.
I'm gonna continue. So, I'm a farmer, this is true. This is my testimony, and as a citizen, I just paid my property tax, and I've found out that you use, Caldwell City gets fifty-one percent of the property tax, your city does. That's the highest in all the other cities. Greenville only uses fifteen percent for their city. You guys have big fat pockets, and you're not using it well.
So, and kinda go off of that, just be, keep it respectful over those accusations?
Respectful would be if you respected us. Civil servant means we, the people, we, we hire you.
Okay, we're gonna stop it right there. So, we'll bring up the next one, Ariel.
Did I finish my question?
So, so, no, we're gonna stop you there, right now. So, Ariel, you can start coming up. So, in regards to just a few of those questions, you can go ahead and take a seat. The levy was through the Caldwell School District, so those were the patrons that voted on that. Some of them were, were in City of Caldwell, some not, so it's within that school district. And it was the Caldwell School District that decided to hire the private security, not the City of Caldwell. So, if you have issues with that, I would, I would suggest that you meet with the Caldwell School District on that. But again, thank you for being here. We'd ask you to take a seat, and then Ariel can come forward.
So, I'm, I have a question.
No, we're gonna go ahead and move forward.
No, I'm a little, I'm, I have a question for you.
No, we are going to-
I have a question for you.
Go ahead and sit down.
I'm confused why, when we have, when we ask people to come here and speak, and they do, whether you like what they're saying or not, or the tone of voice, which I don't really wanna be yelled at either, but I think she's always passionate, why are we telling people to stop talking?
So, it's not the proper place or time. If they wanna come in and schedule a meeting with myself or other staff, they're more than welcome to do so.
Well, it's audience participation, that's what it's for.
So, and that is taking place, so now we're gonna ask her to take a seat, and Ariel can come forward.
Okay, but I've had people come up here and speak before that I don't agree with, I don't interrupt them, and I don't tell them to sit down.
So, no, go, you go ahead and sit. I asked Ariel that she can come up. And again, three minutes, keep it respectful. We asked you not make accusations, things of that nature. If you do have issues, those can be taken off at different time with, with city staff at that time.
No, I, I understand that. Is there any way for me to submit something for public record?
So, yeah, we could take that.
This right here is a survey-style petition that I collected at the College of Idaho from coaches, staff, and the student body. I have signatures from two hundred and thirty-two members at the college in opposition to the rodeo and, not, not the rodeo, the building upon the dirt lot, which is twenty-one percent of the body of the College of Idaho. Most times for petitions, twenty percent is required to start any kind of movement, and we achieve twenty-one percent. So I just wanted to submit this and give that to you all, so that you have that in The next thing I'd like to speak on, just on behalf of that testimony from my colleagues at the college, is, you know, that, sign that petition, just to clarify, that twenty-one percent signature status. A big news thing happened recently this week. The youth of South Korea banded together using K-pop music to impeach their president after he decided to impose martial law. And that was a big movement. Twenty million people got together and used, like I said, music peacefully and acting in unity together to give themselves a voice as a people in a, what many would consider an oppressed country compared to the United States, a place such as South Korea. So, speaking on behalf of that twenty-one percent of majority youth, and like I said, coaches and some staff members at the college, we've now been in discussion as to looking to other parts of the world that we consider to be our colleagues in our age group and our generation, to find out how we can be heard as well. A lot of us hold a massive amount of admiration for how they peacefully stood for their rights to be heard as a people in that country, and I just wanted to testify that our generation here locally in Caldwell is looking to take that initiative as well, because we stand together, and we stand together to be heard. And I just wanted to testify that that's something that's going on now, and I have the signatures, sorry to back it up at this time for who I'm representing this time when I speak. So, just wanted to share that with you guys, and I appreciate your time for my testimony.
Thank you. Are there phone numbers on there by chance?
There's not phone numbers, there's address and names. All the names are accurate, you are definitely able to look into them, as well as I had a lot of athletes signed it, so I had them all put their sport down in the comment section as well, so.
Appreciate that. We will follow up, 'cause I did have some people come in, and one specific say that there was many assigned, did not understand what they were assigning, so I'm not sure if we explained it to them or not, what they were. I know the college-
There's a written, there's a written section on top that I had everybody read before.
So, yeah, we'll follow up on that and kinda see how many on that, but appreciate you bringing that down to take that time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That ends our audience participation for this evening, so that'll move us into our consent calendar. I do not believe we have any amendments.
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
For the consent calendar, approve the consent calendar, remove calendar, item number three to new business for discussion, remove item number seven from the consent calendar as requested by staff, and then we're gonna add an executive session.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second, so we have a motion from Counsel Doughty and a second from Counsel Denver for amendment to the consent calendar as noted. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So now do we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as amended?
So moved.
Yes, so Counselor Stoddick with the motion, I believe, is that correct? And then Counsel Doughty with the second. Any discussion on that motion? With that, the voting is open at this time. All votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. So that moves us, there is no old business, so that moves us into our new business for this evening. First item up is a public hearing, and it looks like Doug, you've got it, so I'll just kinda turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Douglas Waterman here presenting a new site-specific urban renewal plan. So, this is the final time, this will, you can't hear me? Okay. How about, is it better now? Okay. This is the final time this particular proposal will come before you, this is the final hearing on the proposal. As we talked about in the past, there is a, some property, some owned by the agency to the, on the eastern corner of Arthur and Kimball, as well as some private property there, the dirt lot right, right beside the plaza, and what is currently the Indian Creek Hair and Nail Building there. And this proposal is to create a new urban renewal area so that there's a framework in place for the agency to dispose of, through the RFP process, that property and have, have development come and develop that property. So, the plan is, is sort of the standard plan. The, the project list is short. When we last spoke, the project list included a sort of Phase A for those things that were anticipated to be feasible for certain, and a Phase B that included things that were potentially feasible, depending on how the, the revenue went throughout the planned period. Based on council's comments, the last meeting when we scheduled this hearing, that has been reduced to just having those items that are deemed feasible pursuant to the feasibility study, not including the additional projects. So, it makes the plan more finite and certain. When those power improvements and panel upgrades are done, the plan will, will sunset once those have been, been reimbursed. The Planning and Zoning Commission took the, took the plan up, found that it, it conformed with the comprehensive plan of the city, and the notices have gone out to the taxing districts. Like I said, this is the final hearing, it's the public opportunity to come and make comment on the plan. I've said this in the past as well, in this particular area, it's, it's not required that every property owner consent to have an urban renewal plan, their property's in that area, but in this circumstance, all of the owners of the properties that would be within this very small area have consented, which is excellent. And again, the, the primary purpose of this plan is to permit the agency within the context of urban renewal law to engage in the RFP process so that that property can be ultimately developed, and, and the business can come into Caldwell and, and provide services to the citizens. So, with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions, and I'm happy to come back up after the public comment portion and, and provide additional comment, but should be relatively straightforward.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Counselor Doughty.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Counselor Allgood and I sit on the urban renewal. We've spent a lot of time getting this pretty narrowed down to very specific items that need to be done, and I am in support, finally, as long as Counselor Williams is, because we really narrowed this down based on some of his comments, so, thank you.
Good, thank you so much. And we do have a few of our urban renewal commissioners in the audience as well, so yes, Counsel Doughty and Counsel Allgood do as well, and please raise your hand. Yes, thank you so much, we appreciate your service, both of you, on what you do on that, and I'm sure there's lots of, lots of time spent in regards to this item, so. Any other questions at this time for Douglas?
I have-
Oh, yes, Counsel Register.
Did you say there's gonna be another presentation, and then you're coming back up? Or this is it?
This is a public hearing, so in the event that a member of the public signed up to provide public comment, then, then they would, would speak, and then I can answer any follow-up questions.
Well, I do have some questions, even though it sounds like it's only three people, but is there already a developer in place for this project?
No one has been awarded an RFP. I know Mr. Jenkins is not here, I know he's talked to developers, but there's no signed development agreement. The ultimate decision on entering into anything like that would be with the Urban Renewal Agency.
Do you know how many developers have been talked to?
I do not.
Do you think it's more than one?
I don't know.
Okay. I think a lot of these questions are actually going to be for Mr. Jenkins, so I'm not sure if you, I'm just gonna ask him, and if you can't answer him, we'll, we'll go from there. Do you by any chance know how much money's already been spent to revitalize the downtown?
Mayor Counsel Register, I, I don't know, the, are you talking about in terms of urban renewal fund money, or?
Yeah, like, just money that taxpayer, money that's been used, I mean, we're talking millions since the inception of Indian Creek.
Mayor Counsel Register, I have, I have no idea. Every road improvement or, or the plaza itself, the opening of Indian Creek, all those things, some were accomplished by the city, some by the Urban Renewal Agency, I, I have no idea how to, to sort of draw the line even around that, what that would be.
I'm gonna guess that's probably, probably a good thing. With that, I, I feel like, you know, we've spent so much money, and I'm sort of, and this is probably, again, not something that you can answer, it's probably gonna come back to maybe needing, for me, questions answered by Mr. Jenkins, who's not here doing the presentation, but, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to figure out why we're still having to offer incentives to people to come here and build.
Sure. Mayor Counsel Register, I, I don't know what all the market forces are that make one property appealing and one property less appealing. The, this particular parcel has gone through a couple RFPs under the prior plan. It was, there were at least one award that, that project ended up not going forward, so a, a portion of this is privately owned, and I don't know what has caused it to not develop, but what appears to be the case as of today is that it hasn't. Whatever the market forces have been have not been sufficient to cause this property to develop.
So, in essence, so that the public understands that when we do an urban renewal, then essentially a developer, whoever receives the award, is basically getting this property for free.
So, Mayor Counsel Register, for the- So, Mayor Council Register, for the portion that the agency owns, a redevelopment appraisal would be done typically to determine essentially what the value of the property is from a redevelopment standpoint. That can, that can produce a zero-dollar figure purchase amount. Other property in that same area right there is privately owned and that would have to be negotiated with that private owner.
Right, right, because this is a split lot, right? A city-owned or the urban renewal-owned part of it and then a private developer owns, or a private interest owns the other part, is that right?
Mayor Council Register, yes, the agency owns one part, one developer owns two of the lots, I think it's two, or two or one on the northeast portion of the property and then a third, to my knowledge, a third owner owns the building there that's currently housing the salon.
So for the part that urban renewal owns, that could be given to a developer at a zero cost, it's possible that that could happen.
Mayor Council, that's correct.
So how does that affect like with taxes and do they just pay taxes on whatever they build, they don't ever pay on the land?
So, Mayor Council Register, they, they will pay taxes on the assessor's appraised valuation and they will pay, they will pay the same taxes whether or not the agency is in place or not. The consequence of the agency having a plan in place is that that portion of the tax that is a product of development that occurred after the inception of the plan goes to the agency. So, right now, I don't know what the real, the real property value is for the property owned by the other developer or for the salon, but if the plan is approved, whatever those dollars are that are currently going to the various taxing districts will continue to do so. But in the event that the properties go up in value by virtue of some development, then, then that increment would go to the agency with the exception that I would have to check, double-check the list to be absolutely certain, but I believe that there is a call-out for school funds, maybe for school levies and I believe that there is an obligation to, the highway district doesn't opt-in. So, if there was development on those lots, given that checking the code, I believe that both of those entities would see an increase in revenue by virtue of the development as opposed to just it staying static.
Okay, and then, you said that the neighbors gave consent to this, which ones were those?
Mayor Council Register, not the neighbors, the people who own property within the area, so the agency.
Who, who is that?
Mr. Sanga. And then the owner of the salon, I'm not certain of the name of that person, but.
Okay. Okay, because I just want to make sure that I get this all correct. You said that there was a feasibility study?
That's correct, that's Plan Attachment Seven, I believe.
And does that tell you what the best use is of this lot should be?
Mayor Council Register, no, that's not the purpose of the feasibility study. The feasibility study determines what increment could reasonably be expected to be generated based upon anticipated potential development and then what projects would be feasible, financially feasible based upon that increment value, increment number.
Okay, because what I've heard about this lot is that, that whoever makes the decision or that it's going to be, or it's going to be awarded, I don't know exactly how the process is, to more of a restaurant-type style establishment. And then I also heard that there was some idea that maybe this would be a better place for downtown living where there would be a developer who already had a plan in place with a garage to take care of the parking. So, when this goes out for RFP, how does that work? Does it go out for a specific thing like a restaurant or does it go out for a specific thing like downtown living? Or does it just go out for everything and how does, how's that decided?
Mayor Council Register, that, those decisions, the answer is it could go out at any of those forms. Those decisions would be made by the agency. So whether they made a specific request for a category of uses, whether they specifically requested that some component be included like parking or residences, whether or not they left it open-ended and ultimately the decision to proceed with any, any proposal or all of those decisions would be made by the agency.
So with this, if this gets approved, is it open for all of that? To go back to the agency for them to make that decision or there's not anything that locks it in tonight?
Mayor Council, that's correct, yep, it would be, the agency would have control over that.
I do feel like it, because it's, you know, a prime piece of real estate and it really needs to be considered, those things need to be considered. Let's see. Are they, and they're not using the whole lot, is that correct?
Mayor Council Register, I'm not sure what you mean, who's not using it?
Well, whoever gets it, will they be using the whole lot? Or they're part of the urban renewal part?
Mayor Council Register, the agency only has the power to dispose of its own property, of course, it can't force the, the other property owners to participate. The agency has the authority to do an RFP and so whether or not they used, whether or not the agency did an RFP just for its portion, whether or not the other property owner wanted to, to propose something to have their property included, I'm not sure how that would, how that would work, but, but it could probably be sorted out. And what the final lot layout looks like would all be agency decisions. But it, it could have a footprint that was the whole lot or it could have a different footprint.
Okay, and then, and maybe I'm imagining this, but I feel like we just did another UR down, like a spot one, did we not do one?
Mayor Council Register, this, this is, I think, the one that you're remembering. On your agenda for later in the evening, there is another, we're here with a request from the agency for a site-specific one that would go through the process next year. The process of planning is contingent on having numbers from the county and things like that. But, so you may be thinking of that one, but this would be the first instance where that would have been on the agenda, so I believe you're probably thinking of the same one.
Is the only site-specific UR that we have is this one that we're talking about right now?
Mayor Council Register, there is no, there is nothing, the only active plan is the large plan to the northwest of Caldwell. That's the only active one, there's no other plan, site-specific or otherwise. This one is the only one that's at this point in the planning process or that we've talked about this year. There was another site-specific proposal from the agency, well, right now it's just a declaration of the status of the property is deteriorated, but that would not come till next year.
Okay, and then how long would this one last?
This one would last for twenty years or until the project were funded, whichever was shorter.
Okay, and over those twenty years or whichever is shorter than the taxpayers are paying for it? By basically giving away a piece of land to a developer, is that right?
So, Mayor Council Register, there's, there's some debate on what, how urban renewal funding works and there's a disagreement of opinion. But what I can tell you is that right now the property is generating some amount of tax revenue, that the tax revenue is currently gener, not the agency-owned property, the other property. Whatever revenue is being generated by that property will continue to go to the agencies where it's going now. If, as is the case here, the property has, for whatever reason, not been able to attract development in the absence of a, of a plan, you could make potentially the assumption that it will continue to not develop, which means that there will be no revenue from that property for twenty more years. If the plan manages to entice a business to come and build there, then there will be a period of time when the taxes the business pays goes to refund essentially the public improvements that were accomplished by that business, but after that, that business would go on the tax rolls and pay taxes like everybody else, so. So, I don't know if that answers your question directly. I disagree conceptually that the consequence of urban renewal is that people's taxes go up as a per se matter.
Well, who pays, I mean, the taxpayer pays for it though, right?
Mayor Council Register, pays for what?
You said that urban renewal doesn't cause taxes to go up, but the taxpayer is paying for this.
Mayor Council Register, the, the, the person who builds there will pay to build and then the person who builds there will pay property taxes and a portion of the taxes they pay will go to refund public improvements that they accomplished. So, so, I guess I don't quite understand the question.
Well, what do you need our approval for if it doesn't involve the taxpayer?
Well, Mayor Council Register, the law, Title Fifty, Chapters Twenty, Twenty-Nine, provide a process by which urban renewal plans are approved and this is the process.
Right, but like if I understand it correctly, when we had the other urban renewal that sunsetted, there was a amount of taxes that were taken to be put into that to build the creek and that was then sunsetted and released and everybody's property tax went down, it seemed like. So, in this particular case, it does affect the taxpayers somehow, in some way, however that is. Maybe not on such a large scale, but it does.
Yeah, so Mayor Council Register, I agree with that description entirely, it does affect the taxpayers, but I think it's important to clarify how. So, with, for example, the, the area that has recently sunset, the agency worked hard to bring in businesses to that area, lots of construction was done and that generated a lot of increment that went to the agency to reimburse those expenses. If the agency had not engaged in that activity, you could argue that those businesses would not have come. So, during the period of time when the agency is in place, it is true that money that is being paid as taxes is going to the agency, but if the agency is in fact but for, but for cause of development, which I would take the position that it often is, then in the absence of the agency, the taxing entities would be in an identical situation depending on the kind of service they provide. And at sunset, their tax base grows in terms of the north, or the east area substantially, which is why taxes went down. So, it's sort of like if I was building a, a house for somebody and I started the project building a house, it was going to take twenty years, which would be, I certainly hope that no one finds himself in that circumstance, but at any point in the process, it is true that the, the house being partially constructed, if you don't have a certificate of occupancy and no one can occupy it, someone's being deprived of occupancy of that house. But the house wouldn't have been constructed except for the contract to build the house. And the process in place permits the house to be built entirely so that the residents get the full use of it instead of stopping in the middle and having half a house. That may not be the best analogy, but it makes sense to me.
I'm still having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but I got most of that, most of the house analogy. And all I guess I'm trying to say is that over a period of twenty years that we had an urban renewal where millions of dollars was invested into the downtown, it seems just like I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around why we can't attract people down there after all the money that we've already spent to, you know, buy it themselves, is all I'm getting at.
Okay, perfect, thanks so much. So just, I'll just touch on that real brief on that. I know that we are constantly approached by businesses asking what can we do? It is kind of a, we love our neighbor to the, to the east, city of Nampa, but it is a little bit of a competition, healthy competition you could say as far as attracting businesses. And I know that Steve Jenkins is constantly inundated with developers, builders, restaurants wanting to come to Caldwell and asking what can we do? They're like, well, city of Nampa is going to waive these fees, going to pay these fees for us. And it's because most of the downtown Nampa, my understanding, is in an urban renewal area. So they're able to use that money to pay some of their connection fees and things of that nature. So we are still, even though we've done some great things downtown, we are still in that competition of trying to convince people to come here rather than say Nampa where they do have that kind of leg up because they have that ability. This is not for the entire downtown, obviously it is just for one specific property, but we do still see that even with the great things we've done, having to try to attract, you know, those customers coming to Caldwell, overcoming some of the things that other cities are able to do to pay for certain fee, elements or fees that we just are not able to. So it is a constant competition regardless of what we've done in the downtown, which is phenomenal and does attract that, but we got to continue to fight for it, but it's what we've kind of seen, so. There is, nobody's signed up to speak, so if you have questions, now would be the time, Council.
I don't really have a question more than a statement, I just want to make sure that the correct information is out there and Douglas did a good job, I just want to add to it if that's okay.
Yes, please.
So, there's discussion about how it affects the taxpayers. The only tax dollars that go to this piece of property are paid by the people who are developing this piece of property. Doesn't affect my tax bill, doesn't affect your tax bill, am I speaking accurately?
Mayor, Council Allgood, yes, the, the, it is true that the only increment, only tax dollars that go to the agency are ones that come from that property. Now, again, there's, there's debate about the impact on services and things like that, but it is true that the only dollars that will go to the agency will come from those properties.
And then the second thing is, one of the benefits by having urban renewal involved in a piece of property downtown is if, if it was just put on the market for sale, which, I mean, the private parties can do that. I mean, they, they've had the property for years, they can put it on the market any time. But one of the benefits is you could have a speculator come in, buy the property and sit on it for the next ten years and do nothing, leave it a dirt lot. By having the urban renewal agency involved, when that RFP goes out, we can say if you're going to get awarded the project for this piece of property, it has to be built in two years. There's, there's not a, you're not just going to sit on a dirt lot in our downtown, you're going to build an appropriate building and you're going to build it within two years, which is, which is a common RFP. And so that, that gives us the ability to avoid big bear loss in downtown and although we've had that, it's a momentum builder, I mean, that, that lot has sat there for, well, I can't remember how many years it's been vacant now, but, but it gives us the ability to, as just as stated, to urban renewal. And yes, millions of dollars have been spent downtown and I believe we all enjoy the fruits of those millions of dollars and they did not raise, the, the, the result of the urban renewal east area has been that millions of dollars have come into the tax rolls and everybody's taxes have gone down. It's not because they were paying more before, it's because more business has, is now taking a piece of that pie allowing residential owners to pay less. But anyway, I just want to make sure we're not putting stuff out there that's inaccurate.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
I'm going to respond to that. I'm not trying to be inaccurate, I'm asking questions to make sure that I understand. And then I ask those questions on behalf of the community to make sure they understand, like that's just kind of how it goes. But some of those questions that I have are probably only going to be able to be answered by Steve Jenkins because what I really want to know is what's going to be, what kind of RFP is going to, what are they're going to ask for, right? Like what kind of establishment they're going to ask for, whether that's downtown living, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a winery, whatever it's going to be. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page about that since it is such a prime piece of real estate. And as far as the taxes are concerned, maybe I have it wrong, but it was my understanding that when there's a urban renewal that there's a section of taxes, property taxes that are then put aside to fund that and then when that sunsets that those property taxes come back on the tax rolls. So, that's probably a really simplistic way of looking at it, but, you know, that's, that's how I understand it. So, for me, I want to get my questions answered before anything further.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much. As I mentioned, nobody signed up to testify on this, so I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
In a second. It's a motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Stodick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. So with that, that moves us into, and I believe for this motion would be to, so we close the public, oh, so do we, is there no action on this, it's the number two then, is that correct? Is that bill in ordinance? Okay, perfect.
Correct.
Okay, so that was just for the public hearing and then so we'll ask for a motion to close this public hearing?
So move.
Okay, so that was, okay, so that was.
Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a motion.
Okay, perfect.
Consider Bill Number Eighty-Six, Ordinance Number Thirty-Six Forty-Seven, authorizing the adoption of Site Eight, Caldwell Urban Renewal Area with a request to move for its passage by title only.
Second.
Perfect, so that's a motion for Council Doughty and a second for Council Denber. This is again, Act New Business Number Two for Bill Number Eighty-Six and Ordinance Number Thirty-Six Forty-Seven. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, then voting is open this time. All votes are cast, the voting is closed. And that motion passes with five in favor and one in opposition. Council Register did vote no in regards to that request. And that will move us into item number three, this is another public hearing and to obtain public comments from interested individuals and organizations on the program year 2023, CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Robin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robin Collins, Community Development Director, City of Caldwell. I'm here tonight to present to you the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is called the CAPR for CDBG. Just a little bit about the CAPR, the City of Caldwell is an entitlement community. We receive funds annually from the US Housing and Urban Development. Those funds are used for programs and services that benefit low to moderate income persons or households. That low to moderate income is anyone below eighty percent of the area median income. HUD requires us to do an annual CAPR each year, we have to have a fifteen-day comment period. We've set that for this year as December third through December seventeenth. We have to do a legal ad in the newspaper, advertise it twice. We have to have this public hearing tonight to take public comment and we have to have the report available for viewing and we put those at the library, the city clerk's office, on the city's website and it's within your packet tonight. So this CAPR is for. So this CAPR is for program year 2023, which is October 1, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. So in program year 2023, the city received $444,484 from HUD. We also continued to administer a little over $502,000 in the CARES Act funding that we received in program year 2020. For the goals and accomplishments, the city had five priority goals that were listed in their five-year consolidated plan. Um, and in this program year, the city made progress in four out of those five goals, as you see on the screen before you tonight. So we'll just go through a few of those. Um, the first one was an acquisition and disposition for Westview Lofts Number Two. Um, the funding for this was done a few years back, but in this program year, they finished completion of the construction of 26 affordable rental units. Those are new units added to our housing stock here in Caldwell. Um, all 26 units were constructed and rented out within 30 days and they have a waiting list for more people that want more units constructed. Um, the really cool thing is it serves 63 persons and 44% of those were earning less than 30% of the area median income. The next one was acquisition and disposition. It's called Elgin Street Project. Um, this program year, the city utilized CDBG funds for the acquisition of 10 lots for the construction of 10 new affordable housing units. All the land has been acquired, permits were issued. All 10 homes are currently under construction and are expected to be completed in 2025. So we're really excited about that as well. Public facility and infrastructure improvements. This was the one goal that the city was unable to complete, um, during program year 2023. This was due to the cancellation of the Arthur Street Project. Uh, $76,669 in federal funding were refunded to the HUD program line of credit, which included just a little over $29,000 from this program year of expenses. For public services, the city, um, had services provided by Ketch, which did rapid rehousing and emergency rental assistance, and Jesse Tree, who did emergency rental assistance and case management. Between the two, they assisted 133 individuals and 83% of them were earning less than 50% of the area median income. And that is about $31,200 for one person and $44,550 for a family of four. Their public services included CDBG funding, but also some of that CARES Act funding, um, that we talked about earlier. The other goal and accomplishment was just the program administration for the CDBG program, where we manage the resources, the subrecipient funding, um, the monitoring of their services they're providing, making sure they're meeting their accomplishments, um, all of their invoicing and, and drawdowns. Um, and then connecting individuals to resources and then also advancing our fair housing within our community. So just a little snapshot here of the annual goals versus the actual outcome. The funding provided 19 homeless persons with affordable housing, where we, we weren't sure if we would have that this year. So we, our goal was actually zero for that, but we actually provided 19. Um, on the non-homeless persons providing affordable housing, our goal was six and we actually provided 140 persons, uh, with affordable housing this program year. So households supported. Uh, the funding supported 133 persons through rental assistance, um, compared to our goal of 100. And then supported 26 households through the production of new affordable units and 63 persons, where our goal was actually three. So the total persons served in program year 2023 with the CDBG funds was 196. 54% being in the extremely low income category, 29% being in the low income category, and 17% being in that moderate income category. So the total resources and expenditures, uh, was $943,443 in resources made available. Those were from grant funds from 2020 through 2023. Um, so the total expended out of that $943,000 was $831,301. And I will stand for any questions that you might have, but that's kind of a summary of that 70-page CAPR report.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Counselor Doty? Oh, sorry. No, no problem. Counselor Stoddy, did you?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Robin, uh, just for the record, you have a new responsibility, don't you?
I do. Mayor and Counselor Stoddy, I am the Community Development Director. So I oversee the building division, the planning and zoning division, the CDBG code compliance and parking compliance. And currently, right now, we do not have a CDPG, CDBG position filled, so I have taken on that role right now.
I just wanted to make sure the taxpayers knew that, that's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, she's doing lots of great stuff. Uh, Counselor Allgood?
Um, no, I just, I don't really have a question as much. Well, I do in a minute, but I, I'm just very happy that, that this money is here, seeing the amount of people that are getting the help that, I mean, our, our role is pretty small, but, um, there, the, the way our economy is and the prices are, and I, you know, people are working for 10 or 12 bucks an hour and, and I just, uh, the fact that there is this ability to help people out there, um, I, I really appreciate, and I appreciate everything your office does to make sure this gets out. Do you have any forecast? It looks like our numbers are going down, what our money will look like in continuing years?
Um, we do have what we have been awarded for program year 2024. Rayland, do you remember off the top of your head? Because I don't have it off the top of my head.
I believe it went down about additional $5,000.
Okay.
Yeah, from last year.
So it was down a little bit this, this next year, but we have been awarded for program year 2024 and we're working through, um, those items right now. We're in the process of environmental reviews and so we should have that funding out here within the next month or so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
So there's nobody that has signed up, um, on this item? So that is, uh, stand for motion to close this public hearing? So a motion from Counselor Allgood, second from Counselor Stoddy. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. That'll move us into number four then, and for the resolution of accepting the CDBG CAPR report for program year 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Doty.
Make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution number 43824, authorizing the acceptance of the CDBG CAPR report for program year 2023.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Doty and a second from Counselor Dittenberg for approval of resolution number 438-24. Any discussion on that motion? Uh, with that, the voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. And before we jump into item number five, I did neglect to recognize one other of our urban renewal members, uh, that is here this evening. Um, so the chair, Mr. Porter, is also here. So I want to make sure we recognize you and thank you for your service on the urban renewal agency board as well. So thank you so much for that and I apologize for overlooking you when we were recognizing that. Um, so with that is on to new business item number five. And number five, six, and seven are very similar, um, on that. And so I don't know if you want to cover all of them at the same time, Robin? Will you just do individual motions? Or if you want to do it one at a time, I'll kind of leave it up to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here tonight and, uh, to just explain a couple of these, uh, memorandums uh, that we have put together with some business or some developers. Um, item number five is for a, uh, a land donation, um, that a development, Element Ridge, um, on 10th Avenue, on the west side of 10th Avenue, across the street from Valley View Middle School, is offering, uh, to give the city, um, for a, uh, a future water tank that the city needs. That would be a 3 million gallon tank. Um, I've been working on this project for about a year and a half and we have been looking for the correct location for a tank. And the thing that's tricky about a water tank is it has to be at a very specific elevation because it'll be tied directly to zone two and the elevation of the water tank is dependent on the pressure in zone two. And so you have to be at the right elevation. I've worked with other property owners in that area that are at that correct elevation, um, with no avail. Um, and then finally, we came across Element Ridge that was getting ready to start putting their site plans together. And they had a spot in their back corner that, uh, we felt like was a great spot for this tank. Uh, we worked with them. They offered to, uh, as part of their development, to donate two acres of land to the city um, in exchange for some of the terms that are in this memorandum of understanding. And as you can see, uh, probably the most significant one is that they're gonna be building their frontage, but they want the city to pay for the frontage adjacent to where the tank is, which we felt like was very reasonable. Um, and then the other one was a water line, um, that would be built if, uh, at some future time, we end up putting a well also out of that location, uh, which we're not planning to do in the immediate future. Um, the developer's been very, uh, very good to work with and we are working with them also on a few other projects. And, uh, with that, we feel comfortable with this, um, MOU for Element Ridge. Uh, um, uh, Mr. Hilty's office has reviewed it and so we would like to push forward on this. And then as they come through their entitlement process, um, we will, um, we will make sure that all the, all the details and the terms are set forth. Uh, with that, I stand for any questions. Uh, that's for item number five.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, Counselor Doty?
Thank you. Can you go over the numbers, though? You said it sounds equal, it sounds fair. Can you tell us how much the land is, though? I understand there's some numbers in there, but just so everyone listening can hear as well, what is your assessment of fair, I guess would be my question?
Um, my assessment of fair is that, um, to buy two acres of land, um, the, the prices aren't cheap, especially in a development down by the lake where, um, that would be basically seven, six or seven buildable lots. And so we, we anticipate that that would be over probably a half a million dollars. Um, to do frontage improvements, uh, we would probably be half that, I would guess. And I, I feel like as we looked at the numbers, I feel like the numbers come out in our benefit. They want to be team players and they understand also the city water situation and they want to help out. And so we're very comfortable with this agreement.
Thank you.
Counselor Stoddy?
Mr. Mayor. Uh, Rob, 10th and David, that's almost across from the, uh, Valley View Middle School, right?
Correct.
On that, uh, did the developer or the city, uh, have any means with the, uh, subdivisions in that area? The ones that, residents that are there already relative to the water tower?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, Stoddy, are you, you're asking if there were any concerns with the, the county subdivisions that are already out there?
Yeah.
Um, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Um, the water tower, um, is something that, it, it, it's not a tower, it's a tank. So it's on the ground. It's not like what we have up on Canyon Hill. Um, it may be 20 feet tall. Um, it could be, uh, it, the location we have is it'll be partially in the ground and then partially out of the ground. And so we would plan to have, uh, um, landscape buffers and trees probably surrounding it so that it's not super visible. Uh, people are gonna know it's there. Um, but at this point, we have not talked to the county subdivisions in that area.
Okay, will you, will that, do that in the future or do you know?
Yeah, when the, when the development comes through and if I'm not mistaken, so they have not come through entitlements, correct? Were you able to find that?
I think I recall that it has come through entitlements, but I couldn't find it in my email, so I was still, still looking through them.
Okay. Element, yeah. So I, I apologize. I, I should have checked this before. I, I had thought that it hadn't come through yet. And, and if that were the case, then the neighbors would have the opportunity to come and speak to the development, knowing they will have a, a portion of the lot, a portion of the development will have that water tank, uh, lot isolated, so.
I just wanted to make sure there weren't any surprises for the residents around there, that's all, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Allgood?
Yeah, when I was reading this portion of the packet, Rob, I, I probably read it wrong, but I, this is a permanent structure, correct? I, I somehow I read that there was going to be a temporary portion. And did I read that wrong or is this all a permanent structure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Allgood, this, this is a permanent structure that would be constructed similar to the one we have at Moss and Indiana. Um, at well 17, we have a large water tank there. Um, and then we have one on the hill, of course. But like I mentioned, this is not an elevated structure. It's on the ground.
Is there a temporary sewer structure going in close to that or something?
Uh, oh, yes. I, I apologize. Yes, there is one condition. They, so they have to tie into the sewer line that is all the way down at 10th and Homedale. And so in order to do that, well, let me back up. Um, the development to the north of them is supposed to pull sewer through their site so that this development can connect through the site to the north. Um, but because this development wants to come in before that development builds, um, what they're proposing is a temporary lift station, which is gonna be a small lift station to be able to serve some of the houses and they will be able to do a forest main down to the main line. And then once that other development builds up, then that'll be disconnected and they will be reconnected to the sewer. And that is all on the cost. That's all, uh, the developer's responsibility to pay for. But we, we did the, we looked at the sewer lines just to make sure there was capacity for that temporary bypass and there was no issue there. So we told them that we would honor that connection if that's what they chose to do.
And that's tied to this piece of property in some fashion?
Yeah, that, that is for this property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate that, Mr. McDonald. So with that, this resolution, as per counsel, if you do have any other questions for Rob or any motions in regards to this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, maybe just a conversation. So a point of clarity on what Counselor Stoddy was saying. So at some point, this will still have to be approved by someone to ensure that the folks that live in the county, well, not just the county, but the subdivision have some sort of say in, I guess, what the curtilage is going to look like around this thing?
Yeah, um, Mayor and Council, I just looked up Element Ridge, the subdivision. They have not been before city council yet. They've only been to PNC.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move. Unless there's any, sorry, Counselor Dittenberg.
Did you have a comment, Counselor Dittenberg, or?
No, that's fine. Go ahead. I was just gonna make a comment that if they hadn't been, uh, granted their entitlements yet, that's a question we ask them when they get their entitlements. Do you know that there's a water tank going there? And that's a simple question, so.
Yeah, they're donating the land, so I'd hope that they would, but I guess you never know. We'll find out. So did you want to, did you have a motion you wanted to make or is it Counselor Dittenberg?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, uh, resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with West Land Development as printed.
Perfect. In a second?
Second.
Motion from Counselor Dittenberg and a second from Counselor Doty for approval of the resolution. Any discussion on that motion? With that, the voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. And that'll move us into number six. Um, again, very similar to that one. A resolution authorizing the execution of an MOU with Florida Carter LLC regarding the construction of a city test well and municipal well in pressure zone three within the Florida Carter Development, not to exceed $2 million. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So items number six and seven are almost identical. Um, item number five that I just went through was a little bit different because that wasn't regarding a well, it was a water tank. So for items, um, six and seven, we are collaborating with development, uh, that wants to, um, develop in, in some of those southern parts of the town. And we have diversified our construction, some of our projects, to make sure that, um, we, we have the opportunity, um, from a couple different, uh, angles to get everything done. Um, we are, as, as city council knows, we're pursuing three well projects currently. Uh, one of them is a city project. The other two are these two development projects, item number six and item number seven. Um, basically what this states, the, the well process, uh, has several steps or phases. Um, the first phase would be the test well, where they drill a well. They have different casings that go down to different aquifers and then we can take samples from different locations to find out, uh, which depth has the, the water quality that we are looking for. And then after that's done and that assessment's been made, then the design for the well can be put together and then the construction of the well can happen before it can be, before it comes online. Um, this, the, both of these, uh, MOUs with these two different developers have a lot of steps in place where the city will review the plans, all the specifications. Um, Public Works will be directly involved with looking at cost estimates before they move forward, um, on each phase to make sure that we're comfortable with the cost. on each phase to make sure that we're comfortable with the costs that are moving forward. Both of these projects are, are, are going to happen over the span of two fiscal years. And so we're not going to have all this cost in this year. It's going to carry over into next year. And so as we get into our budget cycle in a few months, we will be able to make sure we're displaying correctly what we think the outcomes of these are going to be going into 2026. In, in my opinion, both of these projects are necessary. Both of these developers have been very cooperative and are willing to put these on their lots. Again, these are lots that are being donated to the city for these well locations. And then the costs, excuse me, I, that's not correct. So the, the cost of the easement for the lot or the lot dedication would be something that the city would be reimbursing. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. And then, and then the construction of the well, we would have reviewed that as we go through to make sure that it meets all city standards. And the, the benefit of having the developers work on these as opposed to the city is they sometimes can get contractors to get out there much quicker. They can get things done a little quicker than we can and they, they know that these need to be done on their timeframe so that they can start building houses. And so I think there's a big benefit there. And with that, I will stand for any questions for the MOU for item number six and number seven.
Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob, I just want to thank you for all your hard work on this and the collaboration of these private entities and moving things along the way that you are. And I think this is part of a great solution to getting us to where we need to be.
Councilor Ogden?
I don't know anything about drilling wells. Let's just be clear there. But I've had lots of conversations with your predecessor and he's a water nut, as you know. Anyway, my, my, my big concern is that when drilling wells for the public, you know, there's, there's such stringent, stringent standards. And, and farming that out to a third party concerns me. You know, when, when we pick our well operator, our well, the person who's going to bore that hole, we have a list of people that we know are qualified to do that. And farming that out to a third party makes me nervous. I'm just, I'm looking for, I guess, some confirmation that this will be all right. Because I know there's a, there's, you know, it's not digging a hole in the ground. There's a lot more technology that goes into it. And, and I, I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, because we're, we're providing this water to lots of residents, that we're doing the right thing.
Sure. Thank you. Count, Mayor Wagner, Councilman Ogden, you bring up a very valid point and that is definitely something that we have thought through. Building a municipal well is not like drilling an irrigation well. It's, it's very different. There's a lot more technology, like you're saying. There's a lot of electronics and control systems that go into that. There's, there's different types of drilling techniques to make sure that you're getting something that's not transferring water vertically from aquifer to aquifer outside of the well casing. And so we look at all that. And, and basically the way we control that is that as these developers put their contracts together for their contractors, the city would be involved in reviewing those contracts to make sure they meet all of the specifications and requirements that we want to see in there. And then in addition to that, we have a, a city staff member, our hydrogeologist who will be...
You're a hydrogeologist?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was thinking of some other title. We have a hydrogeologist on board that will be working directly with these developers on these projects and overseeing to make sure that we're taking all those steps necessary.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, at the end of the day, we're just responsible for the water we're putting out. I want to make sure we're, we're doing the right thing. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Councilor Denber?
Mr. McDonald, my question is along the same line. When we chatted here a couple of months ago, and I think it was right here in, in, in open session, the comment was made, yeah, it takes a year, year and a half or two years to get the wheels turning for the city to, to drill a well. Is that just because of the bureaucratic process that a private developer can go in and start the process next month? What, what makes it more efficient for a private developer who are obviously looking for the same well driller we're looking for?
Yeah. That's a very good question, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Denber. I think there's a couple of things there. One of them is, it, it's a little bit, it, it can be staff time and our availability to be available for all of those different projects. And we have one person that's dedicated to our well projects and then we have some, of course, in the water department that will be overseeing. But not having to push that forward, knowing that a developer is pushing as hard as they can to get that moving forward because they want to start building houses, I think takes a little bit of pressure off us. The other thing that is nice about it is if it's all in the city's hands and then for some reason we come up short or we don't make deadlines, then that puts the city in a very tough situation with developers. And so those are two things. I think just on a general standpoint with development, these developers, as I met with them personally, they've done a lot of municipal wells in other jurisdictions. They have more contacts than I have with, with well drillers and other people. And so I think there's some advantage there too where they maybe have worked with a driller that's done 10 wells for their developments throughout the, throughout Idaho. And they may be able to have that person on speed dial where they could just come in and start getting quotes and start getting design put together. And so I think, I think those are some of the significant advantages.
Okay. Very good. I don't see any other lights on, so appreciate that, Mr. McDonald. So again, this can be all wrapped up in one motion if you like for the number six and seven for these resolutions. So I don't know if there's any further discussion or any motions.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Denber?
All right. I move that we bundle these two together. Which one will we do? Six and seven? All right. I move that we approve item number six and item number seven to consider resolutions authorizing the execution of memorandum of understanding for the reimbursement not to exceed $2 million for the said projects.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's a motion from Councilor Denber and a second from Councilor Doughty for approval of these resolutions as stated and noted in the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is now open. And so it looks like we'll go ahead and do both, vote separately. So this is for the first one, the number six, which is for Florida Carture LLC. All votes are cast, so that is closed and that passes unanimously. And then the next one will be new business number seven, and this is for the Toll West Incorporated Florida Carture Development. So with that, voting is open for that. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed and that one passes unanimously as well. That'll move us into number eight, resolution authorizing purchase in the amount of $130,000 for the first two years of a three-year agreement with Peregrine Technologies for centralized data management. Deputy Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. I'm here with another enticing proposal for you. It is Peregrine. If you remember, we proposed this during our budget proposal for the FY '25. It didn't make the cut, but we've kept our eyes on it and waited for some available funding to make another proposal. So Peregrine is basically a management platform. So what it does is it brings all of your data together from several applications. So I put a couple on there. CAD RMS system, our body worn cameras, our license plate readers, our payroll. It will all go into one platform that can communicate and more importantly, provide the end user with something that's readable and, and easy to use. At the police department, we run 14, 15 different applications. They're in different systems. So a lot of it, you know, it, it doesn't communicate as well as we want to. For this management platform, it kind of works like a Google search. So you have all this data in one place. You can type somebody's name and every time that person's name is mentioned in a report, it'll automatically pop up. Anytime his vehicle's mentioned, it'll pop up. Anytime there's any body worn camera video on the person, it'll pop up. Everything in the data system will pop up for this person. So it's pretty fluid and, and pretty easy. And when we have the demo, it really comes up within seconds. So it, it's good for every single level of the department, from the executive to the investigators, to the patrol officers, to our crime data analysts. It helps with strategic planning, so resource allocation, departmental priorities. As you remember, earlier in the year, we did a police allocation model. That actually cost us about $10,000 to get that study done. With this system, we can do it whenever we want to. As far as investigations, like I said, they can make a lot of different connections fairly easy, within seconds. That will save our investigators a lot of time. As far as data analysis goes, it's real time. So whenever the data is uploaded, the system uploads. With the data analysis, we'll go into cost savings because I talked to our crime data analyst, our contractor. And I spoke with him and he said, with this system, we won't have to hire another crime data analyst. We can just have one. Typically, we were planning on having two because it takes a long time to run a report. But as I said earlier, this will do it within seconds. It would also save time with our records department and the workflow, making, making it easier for them within seconds to send reports to the PA's office. So in essence, it saves a lot of time and time saves us a lot of money. So this is just us scratching the surface. I'm sure as we go along, we'll find other ways to save money with the system. But one of, one of, a proposal that was approved was actually for a wellness software. We haven't purchased it yet, but it is in our budget. But we spoke with Peregrine about this and they said they can do the same thing. So it looks like there's a good chance we won't have to purchase that, that software. So far, Ada County Sheriff's Office, they are a customer. Last week, we had a meeting here, another demo, and the chief of police from the Boise Police Department was here in Caldwell. Meridian Napa have both done demos and they're looking to sign on as well. A good thing about this software is it allows you to share as much information as you want or you don't have to share any with anyone who's part of the Peregrine team. So for all the interagencies, even though we're not on the same system, we have different CAD systems, we can communicate with the information we have through this system. So I think it'll definitely bring all the valley together. And I see, when talking to chiefs and, and the two sheriffs, that, that's kind of the plan moving forward. The cost, so the cost is how many applications you want to put in there. So we're looking at putting four applications in for now and it's $65,000 a year for that. So our proposal is for $130,000 that would pay for a year 2025 and 2026. The funding source we're proposing to use is ARPA. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you so much. Councilor Doughty?
Couple of questions. How's our IT support going to be? Is it going to be our local IT or are they providing the support? Meaning, I don't want our IT to be caught off guard with the new software if they're not prepared to handle that.
Mr. Mayor, Council President Doughty, yeah, they have their own IT that'll be assigned to us. And actually, Marlin was a part of the process when we were actually looking and, and demoing the system. So he's, he's been in communication and he agrees that this, there won't be any issues with us going to it.
You have more, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And then also in year three, when the $65,000 comes due, that's going to be on us to figure that out?
Mr. Mayor, Council President Doughty, yeah, that's correct. It's either going to go on our police budget or if we don't have the budget, then we won't have it.
Okay. Just want you to know, in year three, when you come back, you don't forget that you've got to come up with $65,000 out of your budget. It's...
Yeah. I've talked to Ray Lynn about it. There's a lot of stuff we got to come up with, so.
Well, or it goes away, right?
Year three is going to be...
Or it goes away.
Yes, or it goes away.
And, and I think that's something to, to be looking at, right? That five-year plan. So all these things we're buying for a good price now, when that bill comes due, there's only so much money to go around, so.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Ogden?
Yeah. Chief, is our primary records keeping system still Spillman?
Mayor, Council Ogden, yes.
Does this integrate with Spillman?
Mayor, Council Ogden, it does.
Is that one of the four you have in mind or, or was that the...
Yeah. I mean, I, I think you definitely have to have your CAD RMS system in there, so that's going to be one of the four.
Okay. All right. And then I was, I, Councilor Doughty kind of stole my thunder. Again, once you sign on to one of these things, it's very hard to un-sign because they have all your data configured. So it is, yeah, $65,000 I'm sure will go up in the future and we're just going to have to make sure we can afford it. But yeah, I, I echo Councilor Doughty's sentiment. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Denber?
Chief, thanks for the presentation. Did I hear you correctly? Because I, I feel like there's a deja vu moment here. Like, didn't we approve some sort of consolidated software program here not too long ago?
Mayor, Councilor Denber, we, we proposed it, but when we were going through our budget, it was kind of, we're either going to take this or take something else. And so we chose to put this on the back burner for a little bit.
So this isn't duplicating something we've already approved. Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. I think there's other questions on that. So with that, this resolution is before council for their, further discussion, for any motions. Councilor Doughty?
I move the resolution authorizing the purchase of the Peregrine Technology System as printed.
Do a second. So the motion from Councilor Doughty is second from Council Williams for approval of the resolution as presented. Any discussion on that motion? With that, the voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed and that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us into item number nine, resolution for approval of an addendum to the cooperative agreement between Citi-Caldwell and ITD. Ray Lynn, it's all you.
So, um, we were notified that the ITD project that was using almost the majority of our ARPA funds came in significantly under bid. So when they did the RFP, it saved us just over $1.8 million. And ARPA funds have to be obligated by December 31st of this year. And so we asked ITD for refunds. We did not lose out on those. However, they did ask for contingency. And so we, because of 10%, just in case there's overages on that. And so part of that project is a pathway. And so the $481,000 for contingency is going to come out of the street fund to cover that pathway and will be refunded if they don't use it. So we are getting $1.8 million in ARPA funds back in this addendum. And then the next one is also an addendum to get about $60,000 back. And that is for the design, which the designer just did for that same project, did not spend as much as they were budgeted. And so we are getting that back as well. And then I'm working peregrinely with departments. And so in January, you will see an abundance of ratifications, unfortunately, because we have to have those signed before December 31st, so.
Very good. Questions? Councilor Doughty?
Dang it. Again, it's twice tonight. I'm, I don't have a question.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Councilor Ogden?
I just like to clarify, make sure the record's clear. So we're getting funds back from two different projects, but we have to reallocate those funds before December?
Yes.
And so we currently, do we have projects that we have put on hold that would qualify for this?
So no. I'm working with both police and fire to help with deferred maintenance essentially for items, capital items that we can purchase. So it doesn't create an ongoing obligation, but just one-time items that we can get purchased through because we do have to do the purchasing process. So we can't put anything to RFP because there's not enough time. So we're working at like cooperative purchasing agreements and stuff like that to make sure we do the purchasing process correctly and follow federal purchasing rules. So we're in a time crunch.
Yeah. Worst-case scenario, the money just goes back to the federal government?
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you so much. Yeah, we definitely don't want that to happen. So it's been really great watching the police and fire department and talk about teamwork between two agencies as they got together and figured out, hey, what, what can we do and get this to make sure we meet all the requirements, specifications for time limits and still benefit both departments pretty equally. And they did an amazing job. We met with them this last week and, and it was a true show of cooperation and teamwork. So we really want to give a shout out to both our police and our fire department for working together on that, so. Okay. Is there any other discussion or any motions? Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a question. How do we do this then? I, I, I think I understand, but will we have to meet again before the year end?
Uh, no. I have been working with them and so those contracts are going to get signed. And then in January 6th, when you have your meeting, it'll be a ratification, which I don't, I know you guys don't love, but with the timing of it, it's going to be a ratification.
Okay. And then just one follow-up question, Mr. Mayor. This is a huge undertaking in a very short period of time. We're going to get everything right so that we don't get stuck later on because it wasn't right.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Doughty?
Just to support that, we just want to be careful. I understand you said we don't want to send it back, but we also don't want to rush it through and get ourselves in trouble either. So I feel confident in Rayland and so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the approval of the addendum to the cooperative agreement with ITD as I think it's supposed to say presented tonight, but it says printed, but either way.
Okay, very good. We have a second. So the motion from Counsel Doughty, a second from Counsel Stodak for approval of the resolution. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. And it sounds like number 10 is pretty identical, just a different amount. So if there's any additional questions for Rayland in regards to item number 10 for this other resolution, this will be resolution 38-24. She's available, or if there's any motions in regards to that item.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Doughty?
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the approval of the addendum to the cooperative agreement with ITD as presented.
Motion from Counsel Doughty, a second from Counsel Stodak for approval of this resolution. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel?
I was just going to comment that it's not very often we get to vote to get money back. That's a really nice thing.
Yeah, especially 1.8 million dollars.
Yeah, that, that's a pretty big rarity.
It is nice. Very good. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, the voting is open at this time. All votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us into item number 11, Consider Resolution Number 439-24, Finding that Certain Areas Within the Municipal Boundaries of the City of Caldwell Are Deteriorated and/or Deteriorating and Appropriate for Urban Renewal Activity. And I believe this is what you had hinted at earlier, Mr. Waterman. So with that, the time is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight you approved a site-specific urban renewal plan for, in downtown. That was the, the last step on the stairway of the process. This proposal for you tonight is step number one on a similar, similar idea. Another proposed site-specific plan on the eastern corner of Chicago and Fifth, over in that residential area. At a urban renewal meeting a couple of months ago, month ago, a couple of months ago, Mr. Ginkie came and sort of shared a vision for some affordable housing at that location and requested that the agency create a, a plan, project area to assist with that. And so this is just the first stage. Before planning activity is appropriate, you have to find that an area is deteriorated or deteriorating. And the resolution goes through and describes that and makes reference to a prior finding done by, in the context of the North End Neighborhood Revitalization District and just sort of the, the, the general hurdles that that area faces as a residential area. So at this point in the process, there's no, there's no actual plan, no project list. It's simply a finding that, yes, that particular lot would be an appropriate place to engage in urban renewal activity by virtue of the fact that it is deteriorated or deteriorating. And, and those definitions have a, have a home within Title 50 chapters 20 and 29. So I, I won't, I won't speak further. I'm happy to answer questions, relatively simple action. The next action after this would be plan creation. There's a, there's a necessary sort of period of time that's going to have to transpire between now and then by virtue of the fact that the county does not have the numbers that are necessary to actually do the feasibility study till mid, to end of March. So there will be a, a lull of sorts until then. But this would be the first step and, and it would come back before this body at least two more times in a more complete form for approval and final hearing in the event that it got that far. So happy to answer questions if you have them.
Very good. Counsel Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A comment and then a question. One of the benefits of these site-specific areas that I like is we can be a lot more restrictive, as we just saw tonight, and be certain that we are in control of what we want the urban renewal to accomplish. And so I'm, I'm, I'm in one sense happy to see this. I know there's some drawbacks to it as well. But the question I have for you, the previous finding, why do we need to do this if this has already been determined to be an area that is deteriorated and deteriorating? Is this not redundant from something that the council in the past has already found?
So Mayor, Counsel Williams, there are, so no, I don't think it's redundant. It may be sort of like lowercase r redundant in the sense that, yes, there was a previously a finding. I think it was in 2014 was the date of that for the area more broadly. But I'm trying to think of a good analogy, but maybe I shouldn't because I'm just taking more time. The, the code, Title 50, chapters 20, 29, has a specific process for the formation of a plan. And one of those requirements is a finding that the, that an area is deteriorated or deteriorating by specific definition set out in Title 50, chapters 20 and 29. So that prior finding, as I understand it, was not part of a urban renewal planning process. And so we would want a resolution that was specific to the process first and foremost. But secondly, also having a 10-year gap between the prior finding and the current finding, it bears reaffirming, that's enough time, circumstances change. There may be areas that were within that broader determination that are no longer deteriorated. This one happens to not be, fall into that category. It still is. But I wouldn't recommend that the city simply rely on that prior determination for the purpose of planning.
Counsel Stodak?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Waterman, will this assist in the reduction of the concern the developer had in putting new sidewalks in the paved alleyway also, in your opinion?
Mayor, Counsel Stodak, yes, it will, it will provide. What it will mean is that, that the, a portion of the property taxes the developer paid will be, will be increment funding to the agency, which the agency can use to reimburse that developer. So as opposed to the developer paying to do those sidewalks or the city paying to do them and full stop, having a plan in place there permits the developer to make those improvements with the knowledge that this, the, the, essentially, public funds will go back to pay for those instead of sitting around and waiting, for example, for, for the city to improve those sidewalks and then developing it sort of helps kickstart in that way.
Thank you.
Counsel Doughty?
And I just wanted to add to make it clear that he will front this money basically for the sidewalks, a fire hydrant. I think there was one more, maybe an alleyway. So he will not get this back. Urban renewal does not own this land. So it's different than the one previously discussed tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, is there any motions regarding this resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Ogden?
I move that resolution number, that we consider resolution number 439-24, Finding that Certain Areas Within the Municipal Boundaries of the City of Caldwell Are Deteriorated and/or Deteriorating and the appropriate, and appropriate for urban renewal activity.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion from Counsel Ogden, a second from Counsel Doughty for approval of resolution number 439-24. Any further discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. And yes, I think that'll be a great thing for that area. I know a lot of people, the area is kind of the, the land that time's forgotten. So it'd be great to see that, to get it improved and just kind of a, maybe a, a recommendation to our great engineering public interest department to continue to look at this area. I know I've talked with business owners, property owners in that area, trying to continue to improve it. Lighting, I know is a big issue in there. Street lighting is extremely old and outdated and not very adequate. So just looking at, you know, obviously it'd be a big bite of the pie to get it all fixed at once, but trying to look at some of these areas and taking a bite at a time through our budget each year, trying to improve different neighborhoods or different blocks perhaps of improved lighting, starting at the most, you know, important areas, most traveled areas, and then working from there just to continue to try to improve that area. And I think lighting would be a big one. There's very old copper, or copperheads, is that what we, snakeheads, copper snakeheads, whatever, the ones that just kind of come out. Anyway, they don't provide very good lighting, so whatever we can do to continue to improve that. We'll go with it. We'll go with it on that. So anyway, just continue to look at that, see what we can do to improve those areas. Okay, and that moves us into number 12, if I'm not mistaken. This is bill number 85, ordinance 3646, amending city code. Doug's going to cover this one as well. It's all you.
Mayor and Council, thanks for having me back. I, I can only really speak to the mechanics of what this does. If there are questions, I believe that the clerk or the mayor may be able to answer those. But in broad strokes, this repeals the sections of the city code that dealt with the youth master plan committee. My understanding is that a conjunction of, or a, not conjunction, a, there are other entities within the city that are sort of engaged in similar youth activities. For example, the Chamber of Commerce, I believe, is one of those. And there may be additional as well that have made this particular committee sort of duplicative of, of activity that's already happening. And so it was the desire that this ordinance be repealed so that it's no longer in the code.
Debbie, anything to add? I know you've been a big part of that over the years.
Well, I think that all of the goals and initiatives that were initially established within the youth master plan have been pretty well satisfied over the years because it's been over 20 years that that was actually written up. And some of the things that the outcome, which was including the youth forum, the baton has been passed over to the YMCA, which has partnered with us for years. And they were excited about being able to take that over and planning that as a whole. The one other activity that we will remain in the planning stages for of the city out of the mayor's office would be the youth family fun day. And that's a partnership throughout a lot of the organizations and agencies that they hold it in our city parks. And we will continue with that because that's been such a broad success for our parks department and our mayor's office. But otherwise, a lot of the initiatives and goals have been accomplished.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Debbie or Doug? Okay, with that, is there any?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Doughty?
Move to approve bill number 85, ordinance 3646 by title only and approve the summary for publication.
Perfect. Do a second. So motion from Counsel Doughty, a second from Counsel Williams for passage of bill 85, ordinance 3646, and approve the summary for publication. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. Moves us into item 13, Bill 87, ordinance 3648. This is one of those housekeeping items regarding municipal irrigation district water annexing into the, well, annexing the Sky Ranch Logistics into the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District. Do we have any discussion or any motions in regards to this bill ordinance? So we have a motion from Counsel Williams. Do we have a second? A second from Counsel Ogden for passage of bill 87, ordinance 3648. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. And again, that is simply just annexing those subdivisions that come into the city, annexing those into the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District for that. And that moves us into, this is the item that was removed from the consent agenda. So this is our new item number 14, a resolution accepting the notice of award in regards to the parking lot development project at 602 Cleveland Boulevard. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just a quick update, the 602 Cleveland site has been a dirt lot for decades since I started at the city. And several years ago, maybe four or five, the, the city leaders at that time felt like it would be a good idea to look into purchasing it. The site had not been able to be developed on because it has environmental conditions underneath the soil. And so building any kind of a structure where you actually have to excavate down into the ground was going to be cost prohibitive. There was one developer, probably six years ago, that was getting ready to develop, but it didn't pencil out for him. At that point, after that, the city looked at purchasing the property and for the purpose of a parking lot. And we worked closely with DEQ and discovered that we could cap the, the lot basically by paving over the top of it without disrupting anything going on underneath. And DEQ was very, was satisfied with that and, and we worked closely with them, including site visits. In 2022, we moved forward on design and at that time, this project was budgeted through urban renewal to build a parking lot there. We went out to bid and received a bid back. I think the low bid was 385, 385,000 to build the parking lot. And right at that same time, the project was cut out of urban renewal's budget. And so we did not pursue or move forward on that project. More recently, we have many city vehicles that are parking on that parking lot and the parking lot does not meet city standards for a parking lot. And so we've relooked at the, the option of getting it paved and getting it done right so that all the city vehicles for the employees that are over at city hall can have all their city vehicles parked at that lot. We put it back out to bid again. We actually budgeted for it in 2024, no, 2025, yes. $450,000, we just recently bid it out. We received 12 bids, which is a lot more than we expected. The low bid was 350. Is that right? Or, sorry, I've got it right here. I don't know. Three, 375, 375,000. So that's 75,000 less than we budgeted in the 2025 budget. And we planned to award that bid. And we had that on the consent agenda and then it was pulled off. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has with regards to this project.
Counsel Register?
Yeah, so it was me that asked for it to come off for a discussion. I had some questions. You answered a lot of them, though. So one of the questions was that this did come before, URA before. I thought it was a cost projected closer to 800,000, but you were saying it was 325 or something like that when it went before them?
Correct. The initial bid was 385.
385. And so are there any more concerns about the contamination that's there? Have we cleaned it up or?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Register, that's a good question. And we did have concerns initially before we purchased the property. We did those investigations and, and DEQ came out to the side and they were comfortable. As long as we weren't digging down deep and we were just capping it, they were comfortable with that and they were not going to have any lingering issues, was the information that we had got from them.
So did they say anything about what's already been contaminated, that it's still in the ground?
Well, it's, it sounds like petroleum. It was an old gas station, I believe. And that's pretty common downtown. You can dig almost anywhere and you're going to hit some kind of petroleum product probably down in the ground. And so I think that was the main thing. And if we were digging down deep, then we would be disturbing some of that. And that's what was giving DEQ some concern. But because the way we designed it, we're, we're just capping the site, they didn't have any concern about what we were proposing.
So they don't, they don't think that it needs to be cleaned up? It's still just seeping in the ground?
Well, I'm, to the extent, and I apologize, Ashley is actually the expert on this. And she was the one, she was here earlier. She negotiated with DEQ and I was out there as well. There's different levels of contamination. And so it wasn't significant enough that it needed to be removed if it could be capped with a parking lot to where rainwater wasn't going to continue to infiltrate and push it into other directions. If it could be capped, the levels were low enough that DEQ did not have concerns.
Did they provide any kind of report or environmental report or any documentation with that? Do, do we have that?
I believe we do, and I would have to double check with Ashley on that.
So this is another, it has nothing to do with you, but another thing where I have these questions and there's not somebody here to answer them that like had hands-on, like with the UR project before. So for me, until I get questions answered, I, it's just the way it is.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And Counsel Register, we're always happy to answer questions in our office. Anytime you have a question, you're welcome to call and we will answer all the questions that you have.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You guys have been really good about that. But sometimes I think some of this stuff needs to be in public meetings so that the public's also. so that the public's also aware of what's going on. So if there's an environmental report or if Ashley has some firsthand knowledge of her conversations, that would be very helpful for me.
Yep. And just to respond to that, we will nail that down before we get started on any construction and make sure we have all of our ducks in a row.
Very good, thank you. And kind of going off of that as well, if you, it's great to also, if you do have those questions, let them know beforehand so they can have those answers in the public forum. And also we know what staff, because we don't wanna keep staff here all night if they don't need to be. So if you can have those questions, even if they need it, they could be answered here, but just provide it to them beforehand so they can have that adequate and have the right staff here to answer them on that regard. Any other questions for Mr. McDonald? Okay, and then with that, we put this in the hands of the Counsel, Counsel, Counsel Doty, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm confident with Mr. McDonald is reporting. And so I move to approve the resolution accepting the notice of award to Sunny Ridge Construction LLC in the amount of 375, 320 for the 602 Cleveland Boulevard Parking Lot Development Project.
Thank you so much, do we have a second? So a motion from Counsel Doty, a second from Counsel Stoddy for approval of the resolution. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed and that motion passes with five in favor and one in opposition, that being Counsel Register. And that moves us into finance report.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Allgood.
I move that accounts payable in the amount of $2,997,942.87 represented by check numbers 182723 through 182905 and payroll for the amount of $760,163.12 represented by check numbers 39738 through 39780. And direct deposits be accepted, payments approved, and vouchers filed in the office of the city clerk.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion from Counsel Allgood and second from Counsel Register in regards to the approval of the finance report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion passes. That'll move us into counsel comments. Counselor Doty.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna reiterate that just because we have a difference of opinion with some of those folks that are here to talk with the council, doesn't mean we don't care. And so for people to assume that this council doesn't care, frankly, is ridiculous to me. I don't know a single counselor up here that doesn't care about their community whether we have the same opinion, opinion or differencing opinion on a subject matter. Other than that, have a great Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you so much, appreciate those comments. Counselor Stoddy.
Ditto, thank you, that's all I have.
Counselor Register.
I actually have longer comments. I do want to address some, sort of on the same token that Counsel Doty brought up. But I'm also disappointed that council didn't go to the meeting with the commissioners, whether it was the agenda or whatever it was. Sometimes you have to have hard conversations. And when you offer solutions that involve other people's properties, sometimes they want to discuss that with you and you gotta, you gotta be able to have those conversations. People are allowed to talk in these meetings. We're always wondering where they are, why aren't they showing up? And then they come here and what Jeanie said, or Jean said in the beginning of the meeting is correct. We admonish them and then we send them away and we make them feel bad for being here. So then you, you end up getting people who are upset. And then they come more and that's why we keep seeing more people. And then they are passionate, they shouldn't be yelling at people, but they are passionate about what they believe. And then as they're talking, they're interrupted or they're sent away. And it's just, to me, I just don't understand that. We have an opportunity to change the perception, but yet we keep treating them like they don't matter. And for me, I just don't think that we should be turning people away just because you don't like what they say. Couple of months after we were elected to council, at least my term, there was a community member that came and basically said that she would be watching us and she was gonna lead the charge to remove us if we got out of line. And she had done it before and not one person told her to sit down. Nobody told her to stop talking. And I didn't particularly like what she had to say, but I was not rude to her. I didn't interrupt her and I didn't ask her to go away. The misrepresentation of facts in anything that we do goes both ways. I've seen it online on both sides of issues. But that's never addressed if you agree with it. So it's, in my opinion, the lack of communication, the process in which we do all of these highly emotionally charged projects is so poor that is why you have the community coming in and being upset. And I, for one, am not gonna tell the community not to come and speak and I'm not going to be silenced while I'm speaking either. So just wanna make that clear.
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I ditto Counsel Man Doty's wishes for everyone in the community a Merry Christmas and trust that with your families, you'll be enjoying the holidays. Thank you for pointing out the obvious, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of misinformation out there right now and it's grievous to me because people can be easily misled by not knowing what the facts are. And I think you just pointed out one tonight in correcting someone. A lot has been said about that meeting that Counselwoman Register just referenced. And it wasn't the county that requested that meeting. And that has gone far and wide that it was. And so thank you for clarifying that. I think if everybody gets the right information and it's correct information, I think things are gonna be a lot more recognizable and appreciated. And so thankful for calm heads in our community. And there are many, and we don't always hear from them, in this chamber. But thankful for those that are working together and cooperating in the spirit of good faith and making sure that the right information is out there.
Thanks so much, Counsel Allgood.
Just kind of echoing everything, I appreciate what you did up there with the speaker. I wanna hear everybody by all means, but in this room, there needs to be a sense of decorum. This, you know, when we, when we come up, when anybody comes up and addresses the council, obviously, there's a place put in that both then for, or the agenda for people to come up and speak, which is always there. But a sense of decorum and proper etiquette when coming up is appropriate. And I believe that should be insisted upon. And again, I echo what Counsel Doty said. This, this job is very hard, it requires a lot of hours. And this sentiment that we don't care, we're just up here making decisions, I don't know what, what is considered being based on, but I care about the City of Caldwell. I care about everything that happens here. And I've spent a lifetime working for the City of Caldwell. And to have somebody come up here and tell me different is offensive. And so anyway, with that, Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Counselor Denber.
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate Counselor Doty, Counselor Williams, Counselor Allgood for their comments this evening. There is, it's required that we have decorum, that we move our business forward in a productive manner. And I would like to see us move forward in that direction. The other thing is, is we lose a lot of sleep over these issues. We're not sold out to anybody. Our pockets aren't getting thick. There's no money to follow. And if there is money to follow, please tell me which path I need to be on because I haven't found it yet. But we are all working hard for the city. And even though we may not agree, the majority sets the course for the city and the majority is setting the course for the city. And I wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. And I'll just kinda echo that. Appreciate the comments that were made. And it is that time of year, so I would just like to again, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, all the council members, the community. We won't be back until next year, so Happy New Year as well. Have a safe New Years. And then also appreciate Counsel Williams mentioning about our families, to enjoy that time with your family during these times of year because it is fleeting, as I'm finding with my kids growing up so quickly. So everyone a Merry Christmas and to your families as well. So with that, I would stand for a motion for, to move into the executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Doty.
Move to executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74206, subsection 1F, for the purpose of discussing pending litigation or there is a general public awareness of probable litigation.
Right, thank you so much, do we have a second? So a motion from Counsel Doty, a second from Counsel Stoddy to go into executive session for those listed in the motion. Any discussion with that? Voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed. And that motion does pass unanimously and that does move us into executive session. Thank you to everyone that was here this evening as you're leaving. Appreciate you spending your evening with us and wish you all a very Merry Christmas.